I have on my, my three.
My commission of eight, seven, three.
Second. On February, I need discussion. On February nine. On vote, pass it. And permit. Next, we have the boards. Our area fire district. Have a file on Roger Casey.
Yes, I'd like to write the rules, Mr. Chairman, and nominate Roger Casey for that position.
Motion.
Sir.
Any other discussion? On February nine. On vote, on firm, pass it. In on community act.
Show up with moves up in the shared need fourth.
And share need quarters, that's second. Any other discussion? On February nine. On vote, confirm it, pass. Guna fire. No, no. We got files on all three of them, Mr. Brian.
Like way the rules are nominated. If I couldn't order the surgery from. January Robbins.
Yeah.
Kathy Manhattan.
Ready? Motion from Sarah Fowler, Donald Robbins, Kathy Manhattan. Any other discussion? On February nine. On vote, confirm it, pass. Mr. Chairman, we have the two weeks. We're going to check this. Okay, thank you. For like, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Alexander has been resigning from his seat on that tax district board, and I'd like to bring him to us in one next session. Susan Glitter, have a second. Any other discussion? On February nine. Vote, confirm it, pass.
Mr. Chairman, I'll contact the chief to the front.
Mainly, there's a need by would, they're not tomorrow. Item, I have received information and records of photo ID impact and murder vote. The more we like here to say, how are you doing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we are. You realize that about eleven more months, we'll be through with Christmas again. Time goes on as you have your fun. Now, thinking January the first of this year, the South Carolina Photo ID Bill have gone into effect. And now the law is state. And order cast about any election, whether it's general election, primary election, municipal, special election, state of South Carolina anymore. A voter is going to have to present one of five forms of photo ID. And put a little pamphlet on your, your desk, a little summary development poster. And we have about ten thousand more of these little pamphlets, and we have some digital posters. Would encourage you if you have a need for some, put up your businesses or some of the groups that you speak to, we would certainly like to get them out in the community. There are, previously prior to January the first, you had shown one of three forms of ID to vote. A driver's license, a South Carolina issued ID, or a voter registration form. Now, we have, the driver's license is still valid. The South Carolina ID is still valid. We have added to the photo ID a military ID or passport, US passport. And the US passport has two forms. One is the photo that kind gets all the stamps that we're all familiar with. And the other is a little plastic card that's issued by Department of State as well. So, those are the four forms there. The fifth form is a voter registration card with picture on it. And there are two forms for that. Each county in the state today includes Sparkberry County. Is a quilt to take the voter's picture and place it on the paper voter registration card. That's a temporary measure. The photograph will then be transmitted digitally to the State Election Commission, where then they will mail out a plastic voter registration card back to us, and we then get it to the voter. That voter registration card will have the voter's picture on it, county, their name, their permanent voter registration number, and place on the back, or signature, as well as barcode, which is a barcode just like on the back of your driver's license. If a voter already has one of those four forms of ID, driver's license, ID, military ID, then they are ready to vote. They do not need a voter registration card with your photo on it. If, for example, a citizen does not have one of those four forms of photo IDs we just talked about, we are going to put the picture on the voter registration card for them. The requirements to register to vote have not changed. We still need proof of someone's residence and street address in the county, which will establish their precinct as well as their municipal districts, county council, House, Senate, school district, special purpose district, et cetera, and so forth. We're not here to talk about the pros and cons. But for a citizen who does not have one of those five, one of those four forms of photo ID, or even voter registration card with a picture on it, the law allows them to vote a provisional paper ballot without showing that photo ID by claiming a reasonable impediment. And reasonable impediment has been described as some of the examples, but not limited to the inability to produce birth certificate, lack of transportation to get the photo made, work requirements, health requirements, when they're taking care of someone as a caregiver, to be able to get one of these four forms of photo ID. Those citizens will vote in provisional paper ballot. That paper ballot will then be placed in a provisional envelope, sealed, the voter will then sign, check off one of the reasons for a reasonable impediment, and will then be memorized or witnessed at each of the precincts. Those provisional ballots cast by someone without a photo ID, those votes will be counted. The poll managers may not challenge or question a voter who claims a reasonable impediment. We take their word for it. If someone thinks a voter is lying about who they are, or lying about the reasonable impediment, only then can that be brought to the attention of the Election Commission. The proof must be made for that. But otherwise, I don't think you show a photo ID, or you claim a reasonable impediment, and you'd be able to vote. The photo ID is not applied to those voters who are requesting to participate in absentee ballot process by mail. You do not have to show proof of ID to vote absentee by mail. You come to our location to vote in person absentee, yes, you will have to show a photo ID. Or someone who shows up to our location who hasn't driver's license, an ID, a military, or a passport, or a voter registration card with a picture on it, but just left it at home, they will also vote in provisional ballot. The difference is that on the morning that we start voting election results, that voter will have to show up at the Election Commission's office and prove that they are who they say they are, presenting a photo ID. So, there's two forms of provisional ballots. One, if requested a reasonable impediment, they don't have to do anything, that vote gets counted. Or if you showed up without an ID that you have, then you'd have to prove who you say you are. We are conducting a series of meetings throughout the county. I think this is the sixth or seventh one that I've done so far, covering the chambers, some of the town hall meetings and so forth to put this word out. These cards are available in the back in the, one, you're not with the agenda. We are also available to meet any of the groups, the church group, the civic group, to talk about this. But we don't anticipate any issues. Elections have been held in several places throughout the state already, most notably Greendale, as they voted for House seventeen, and had no issues with the photo ID requirement. So, we don't anticipate any issues. We think it will be a good bill, will allow voters to participate and cast their ballots for whom they, they say they were. The other topic is, before I move on to early voting, I have a few questions about photo ID. It's explained very well in this card, showed the five forms on the back, and then a little bit more explanation on the back. You each have a poster and get one of these, and more available should you need them. Early voting. There are several bills that have been passed, prefiled in the Senate and the House and the South Carolina General Assembly, dealing with early voting. The difference is the number of days that they want early voting. They place, the Senate version has thirty days, a couple of the House districts, our bills have eleven days or fifteen days, requiring the voter election office to open either three Saturdays or two Saturdays, closing early voting three days prior to an election. There's quite a bit of discussion on that. The discussion seems to be split along party lines down in the General Assembly, and we will wait to see where that goes. I however think we need early voting, as evidenced turnout throughout the state and this county of the people voting absentee. In two thousand and eight, we had about ten thousand people in the state who requested to participate, excuse me, ten thousand people in the county who participated in absentee process. Two thousand and twelve, as I told you before, we had over twenty-one thousand. People are learning those reasons. The difference between absentee voting and early voting, early voting is no excuse vote, I just want to vote. Absentee requires one of seventeen reasons. You have in front of you the statistics of a number of voters in Sparkberry County who do not have the form of photo ID, about eighty-six hundred, age and gender. Most of the folks that have photo ID are in the twenty-five to sixty-four year old range. Of the two hundred and six thousand people in the state of South Carolina who have been identified as not having the photo ID, the state sent out a notice to them notifying them of the change. Ninety percent of that two hundred and six thousand were returned to the State Election Commission as undeliberated due to bad addresses. Parallely, what we have experienced is a soft redistricting when we had fifteen thousand, a hundred thousand of voter registration cards sent out of voters. We think that's an issue that we have to keep in front of our citizens and make sure that we're up, and I hope that that will support early voting down in the General Assembly and let that go, because I think our citizens demand it. There's some other issues on voting that are taking place. We'll save that for another briefing for you, but that covers early voting, that covers photo ID. If there are any questions, if not, thank you for your time.
Can I add a question?
Yes, sir.
I know we only had about fifty percent of the poll workers this past election. You know, you made some comments about that in December, whatever. What can we do to help get a hundred percent of the poll workers, who we're going to need in two years and then two years after that?
Mr. Britt, that's a question I wish I had an easy answer to. It's going to take continued efforts on our part, your part, citizens sitting in here, to continue to spread the word that we need poll managers. The poll management base throughout the state is eighty. We're well over seventy years of age. I met with Ms. Hubbard and Mr. Hill a few weeks ago, and have some pledges from them and assists, and that, and Ms. Hubbard gave me the name of the individual, some young business professionals who have, I've talked with, tried to get them involved. We need a younger group, particularly as we move the laptops to register people or assign people in when they register. One of the things I hope that we can do, and this is a little preemptive notice, and Ms. Hubbard and Mr. Hill don't know this, but I know that Kathy Newland and Cole Allison do. One of the things I would like to see in the budget this year is the ability to purchase the barcode scanners to read driver's licenses or state issued IDs or barcodes. That would speed up the process. Unfortunately, the barcode to read a driver's license barcode, and Kim, you can correct me on this, I think they're about three hundred dollars a piece. It's a different barcode than some can a piece. That's about fifty-one thousand and all. A request will be in my budget, we'll see where that goes as we do that. But it will be, will speed up the process. However, back to your original question, Mr. Britt, we still need about five hundred poll managers. We'll have to continue recruiting. I don't have an easy answer.
Why is that an easy answer? But, you know, Greendale can get a hundred percent, and I think I heard your director say on the day before elections, if you got a hundred percent of poll workers, then we can do it to, I agree with them, to work together. I had a lot of folks, and especially citizens in my district, said if they needed, if we were in need of them, they would have volunteered. A lot of them, all that, they had a lot of people in industry, said, you know, just tell us what to do. So, maybe now we, you know, put together some type PR information, let people know what we need to do, and how do we do need, and let's see if, you know, folks can step forward.
Well, I think also that your assistance in talking to the media that serves Sparkberry County, television, print media, radio media, public science, I don't think a lot of people know that if they do get paid for working there.
And they have to be trained months in advance, right? And just come up and come up over thirty weeks now.
No doubt, it can be trained online. We continue to get the dribbles of people, thirty or forty to town, and we're making progress, but we're starting to lose some of our poll managers now due to age and health and so forth and so on. Contact the colleges, trying to get some college students. Our teenagers at work with great help, and they can walk and chew gum, text and talk on the phone all at the same time. Some of us a little bit late, and we're texting, cussing on keyboard. We need some keyboard lirids, folks, as well. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Britt. Any suggestions you or the list of the council or anybody in the audience has, we would love to have a civic group, for example, if you remember the alliance or Polonics group, you can get together. They are a church group. It's raising funds for a group. Church group or civic group, you could get there, you can sponsor a precinct. All your civic group there and work together. Then they can turn over the money, they get reimbursed or a portion of it, to fund their mission, their missions or their civic challenges for that. That's, that's a possibility.
And most of the people I talked to said they just do it as a civic, do get back from the process, move forward.
Yes, sir.
Especially I was going to say, I think you, you do help relate concerns of a group of citizens in this community. I know one of the first moved, that C.C. Woodson, and I appreciate what you're doing there, getting the word out, and asking for that.
Thank you, Mr. Britt, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that.
Next, we have our committees, taking note of the quick end of the call, with, Chairman, Paul, Jane Hall members, Mr. Britt.
Two items before us. First is a request for adoption and resolution. Project Cartling, this is a project that's, you know, down in the area right now, we're working on that. This is just an inducement agreement. Are you motion to approve this?
So.
Question, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Question carries, we recommend a full council. Second item is a fee and new, first reading for fee and new ordinance for Dettler Automotive. We did a traditional, type of D center for them. It's an existing company, a DMW supplier, great for citizens, doing a good job out there. We're here motion to approve on first reading to the ordinance. So, question late, second, Paul, say aye. Aye, but areas will recommend a full council. That's a good one, David.
Mr. Britt, Paul, you have a key on the furniture, on the, Mr. Chairman, they don't know you're on there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, they wear this, this great name. How are you doing, man? Great, glad to have you here.
Absolutely. Good evening, I bring you greetings from the South Carolina Youth Advocate Program. We are proud of the proud organization that has a contract with the South Carolina Department of Social Services, and we provide placement options for kids that when children have to come into the care statement, which is also known as foster care. I'm here today to not only educate and share information about our organization, but let you guys know that there are over a hundred and twenty children in foster care in Sparkberry County. We do not have a hundred and twenty-three homes to place these children in, so there is a need for additional resource foster care home in this county. An influx of the children are coming from District Six and District Seven. Those are areas that we need to really give attention as far as the care of children and how we keep those children in those counties. We have been out to some of the schools in the area, also working with some of the faith community to increase the number of resource partners that we have in the area, but there's always a need. Every month I get the numbers of the children coming into care increasing. Sometimes it does go down, one or two, but there's a continuing need for children to have a safe and secure home to come to. Foster care has a new book. It's traditionally foster care, children, they go into a home, stay fourteen, fifteen months. With resource foster care, we're actually asking families to become a member of a team working with the child wherever system, attending court, caring, be a part of currency for these children. We have a scale that we try to get children, in twelve months, if they're not going to be reunited with their family, in fifteen months, going to termination of parental rights, and then on to finding currency for these children, whether it be in place in a pre-adopted home, for the children that are in foster care, in foster care homes, those homes adopt the children. So, the need is urgent, the need is, it's here in Sparkberry County, and we just want to make sure that you, as a council, go with them.
But, and just there's obviously a set of criteria that, and we have some specifications, you want to talk about that a little bit, or?
Sure. We have to be at least twenty-one years of age, be able to pass a series of background checks, including fingerprint check. There is a home inspection involved, we have fire marshal that comes out and expects the home. If the home is built after nineteen seventy-eight, we have a TNA inspection to ensure that it's going to last in the home. We have licensed coordinators that work with the families while on, that may be new to the community, because DSs in the past had to do investigations as well as trying to license resource homes. So, we have a new spin on how we're trying to care for the homes to take on this challenge, and it ensures that we follow people through the process, because it is a lengthy process. We try to get homes licensed within ninety days, a hundred and twenty days at the most, and they can get a placement right after that, as soon as they get their application. But we want people to know it's really important that we don't just give you an application, I'll pay for it, and leave it up to you to figure it out. We do have people that will come to your home face to face with you, and make sure that you know everything that's going on through the process.
And Kim, I was interested in being a foster home, how, what do they do, how many contacts do you need to call?
They can call me directly, I am the recruiter for the South Carolina Youth Advocate Program, but they can also call our program at eight six four three one two six seven zero zero. We should have our website up at the end of one, and I'll make sure to get that information to the council. And we're working on the WSBA commercial at this time, also work with some of the radio stations to get the word out. We're actually in our second year of this contract, so we're kind of stepping up a little bit as far as making sure everybody knows, when you think of foster care, resource foster care, you also think of South Carolina Youth Advocate Program.
Fantastic.
You have a question?
Yep, please. Thank you very much, thank you for your time. Thank you, guys. Chairman, over here. We're going to have personnel finance, I'm the best, Chairman, your important main hall members, Mr. Thorpe.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, this is why we have four of our government officials that receive information on the vote for our angle, five and twelve, this is your deal. So, we have Mr. Chairman, well, that'd be Tom, call name. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Very much, Councilman, Chairman, appreciate this opportunity to kind of discuss this with y'all. I know most of y'all have played a role with my presentation for the last couple of years, so I'm going to show you as well on the highlights, and I'm not going to read to you the forty-five pages, just to kind of put in front of you, but point out a few things. What you, what you got in front of you is the CAFR, which is. Which is the comprehensive annual financial report for Sparkberry County for the year two thousand and twelve. Before we get into that, we're going to talk about last year's report. There we go. Because last year's report is, was submitted to the Government Financial Officers Association of the United States of Canada, and gets graded, and for the nineteenth consecutive year, it was awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. That's, that's quite a, quite an achievement, and very good, the two of the nineteen consecutive years. This year's report will get submitted, and hopefully will in, with our twentieth consecutive year. But that is a certificate of achievement that was issued, and that is included within the report. And, and that certificate is, is really from the hard work of your county administration and your financial staff here. My firm is really not involved with, with doing that, other than reviewing some of the items that are put in it and those type things. But, but that is the culmination of your, your good people here and their fine work. This report is broken into three sections. The introductory section, the financial section, of which my audit is involved with, and the statistical section. And the financial section is divided into these categories. The independent auditor report, which is the only thing that I basically own in this report. And it's on page, any reports on page nineteen and eighteen within there, and I'm just going to read a few significant things on it. And it states we have audited the company financial statements of governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information for Sparkberry County. Our responsibility was to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. Including these statements you've got at the Sparkberry County Library, we did not audit those, we relied on the opinion of their auditors, that they're consolidating within these statements. This audit was conducted in accordance with audit standards, general accepted in the United States of America, and standards applicable to the financial audits contained in governmental audit standards. Our opinion, based on our court and the court of other auditor financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, their representative financial position for the government activities, each major fund, and their aggregate remaining fund information for Sparkberry County. And it's done in accordance, in conformity with county principle of general accepted in the United States of America. The second page of this report, it gets into the other areas within this financial section, because two of them, our opinion covers all but two of these other sections in here, and we don't take responsibility for them. And what it states is, the introductory section, combining the individual non-major fund financial statements and schedules, and statistical section are presented for the purposes of additional houses and are not a required part of the financial statements. The combining the individual non-major fund financial statements and schedules are a responsibility of management and were derived from, from and restate directly to the underlying county and other records used to prepare the financial statements. This information has been subjected to the audit procedures applied in the audit of financial statements and additional procedures. Let me skip a little bit of this, that's a lot of jargon, but basically, our opinion covers those sections. The introductory and statistical sections, we have not, they haven't been subjected through our auditing procedures applying on these statements, and therefore, we don't express an opinion on them. Any questions for that? As, as you look at that section, the M V N A, which is pages twenty-one to twenty-eight, which we have limited procedures on, done with time on, it is a very good narrative summation of what the county did during the year. I could not begin to report it any better than that, so I would suggest, you know, reading that, which I'm sure you will. The, the government, the government life financials and the fund financials are two traditional statements that you see in these reports. And as I've explained before, the government life financials look at revenue as it's earned and expenses as they're incurred, which is most typical with your normal businesses and not governmental entities. Your fund financials are more oriented toward when revenue is available and measurable, and expenses when the funds are actually expended. So, it lends itself much better. So it lends itself much better to the budget approach and how you raise dollars through taxes and those type of things. But both of them are there, um, for your, uh, analysis. And there are also two different, um, reconciliations of fund balance between the two. And, and what you'll find is the main differences in your government wide financials. It puts all of your fixed assets, buildings, any of your liabilities, loan obligations. Any type of, uh, O P E, uh, pension benefit type, uh, liabilities are incorporated in that statement. As far as the fund financials, those are incorporated in there. So that's your major differences and those reconciliations will point that out. And then the next section is events in the financials. They're pretty much consistent with exactly how they have been for prior years. And they go into a little more detail or much more detail into how certain account balances change. Now, uh, the only, uh, financial statement I was really going to show you is this, which is part of the fund financials. Which is the budgeted basis of actual. Uh, I think y'all are all aware of, of these numbers. What I'd like to point out, and I'm not sure this other might want to talk a little bit about this. That the expenditures under central government, the big negative number of one point seven million. Is basically due to your self-funded insurance program. My understanding is it was about one point eight million over what was anticipated for, uh, cost this year. If that hadn't been the case, your actual budget variance would have been almost a million dollars to the positive. Now, do you have anything you want to say about that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, hold those remarks until we do the update on our financial report. I, uh, that will give, um, Mr. Halliday an opportunity to move through the audit report to answer any questions to me. But I do have some follow up.
Okay, well, that's fine. I, I didn't know that. But that, that fair is, you know, obviously it was unexpected. And through our discussions, we know it's on the radar screen and things are being taken to, uh, alleviate that issue. The other schedule here is, uh, I think something that's close, pretty close to y'all's heart. Management committed a couple of years ago to maintain a level of general funds, undesigned and unsigned fund balance. Equal to ten to fifteen percent of the expenditures. This year, the ratio decreased to lower than, or right at ten percent. Now, uh, I'm not sure that all of you are aware of the, the fund balance categories. The amount we're talking about is an unsigned at eight million oh oh eight in comparison to the eight million expenditures. Your other category is fund balance. The non-spendable, that's a category of items or funds that are left over. That are restricted by government grants, state laws, those type of things, things that you have no control over on how to stay. The restricted funds, which you have done, um, are funds that are restricted from some other outside source. That y'all really don't have any control over. The next three areas, the committed, assigned and unsigned, those are dollars that you basically have control and you act on. In, in your normal meetings like you are here. With committed or, or items that you've already threw in budget ordinances and whatever decided where they're going to be spent, but they haven't been spent yet. The assigned is a category where, um, you're thinking about making them committed, but you haven't. The intent is there, but you haven't really put that restriction on it. So they're pretty much not available. The other side of the eight million is there for you to do whatever you need to. And as you can see, the percentages of eight million to eight, it's right at ten percent. Now, my understanding is that, that, um, council has already had two, listed as two renderings, two regions. To have an operational budget ordinance to transfer some funds out of another account to shore that up. And I think Catherine was going to talk about that at some point.
Uh, and what Mr. Halliday is referring to is the budget amendment that you have before you receive the. Takes the, uh, funds that we did not use for vehicle replacements in last fiscal year. That we had intended to capture and put into the general fund moves that's over to the general fund fund balance. Roughly two hundred thousand dollars, but that will, uh, make sure that you're within the, that the county is within its ten percent margin. But that's more of a administrative, uh, adjustment that we're using the budget amendment process before you receive them to help us shore up.
Okay. The thing along with the, the CAFR that you've got is a, is a letter addressed to the finance committee. Which is our auditor's required communication. And it's a more formal arrangement where we're required to put on paper that we told you these things. I'm not going to read it to you, but here are the highlights. It, it's saying that management is responsible for the financial statements. It was our responsibility to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance. That the financial statements are free of material mistake and fraud or error and fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. Our opinion is to claim the penalty, meaning that you can do that. Management is responsible for accounting policy issues. Management, management is responsible for estimates, counterestimates, landfill closure, post closure. Uh, funds allowance for the length of taxes, estimated allowance of capital assets. And that's basically covered in that last layer. Now, the S A S one fifteen letter, it's another letter that we require to send when we find material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. In the last two years, you've had one of those letters. There is not one this year. Um, in our audit, the items like that that we've seen in the past, it, it, it's incorrect. Uh, example, uh, overs, uh, extra spending within the shares over budgeted amount for years. That stuff is often brought, brought into under control. Uh, internal issues with purchases and purchase orders. Uh, all that from our review has been brought under control. So there are no S A S, there is no S A S one fifteen letter, which is a very good thing. Any questions from anybody concerned with that? Anything else? That's a pretty short swing, but, you know, I'm, I'm glad for that from, we, we've got, we've got a good time. But I would like to thank people here, Catherine, obviously Jim Hill, Sabrina Mason and her finance department. This is pretty much her lady and she has to fight through and do this, Catherine. Uh, Lisa Canefield, also assistants, Cole Anderson in the budget department. They also are instrumental in, in pulling all this together. So, uh, I, my hat's all for it to you and I appreciate y'all's help that you gave us.
You did. That's right. Can I, can I measure, I said a quick word. Cause, you know, Sam, as you were wrapping up, you mentioned, you know, the last two years, S A S letter. It pointed out that the sheriff's department's tradition, whatever time or whatever. I think we've learned in the last year that, you know, whatever happened back there, um, probably, probably wasn't properly reported or handled by our own team. And, um, so I don't want that to be a reflection on the sheriff. He's more than turned, um, reporting processes around, you know, with the help of Jim and Catherine. Uh, I think there's a much different picture of what happened in the last two years. If you put the same microscope on it, it wouldn't be on the sheriff's department. It would be on.
No, I agree. I didn't mean to blow out.
I just wanted to.
Public, I really have to apologize.
No, no, he said it like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said it like it was because, you know, the sheriff and, and, you know, Major Erst back there has turned a bleeding organization, you know, to jail. You know, millions of dollars going out, turning it around and we're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, back. So I just wanted to make it clear.
Sam, I thank you for what you do and assist him to, to reject the office. So, great, my first off. Catherine, uh, we don't have to let you inform us on this, it's like, I know.
No, sir, this was just to be received, this reporter's information.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Hey, next friend. Thank you for the. Thanks, I would like to say good times, let the personal life be so, and that and our thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to add to that reporter's comment.
Yes, you do.
Um, first, I would like to come on heels of Mr. Halliday's presentation to, um, echo the information that he provided to you. Which was that there is a lot of good news in this financial report. And to take just a moment to thank the staff for what they have done, uh, in response to the council's directive. To get things headed in the right direction. Um, the team, as you can see, really dug in the good news in that report is that but for the health insurance claims. In this county, we would have been almost one billion dollars to the good. That doesn't happen by accident. It doesn't happen by luck. In, in my opinion, it happens by hard work and the team of managers elected appointed. Um, it doesn't really matter to me. It's a team of professionals here who have come together and decided that Sparkford County can do better and will. Um, so I want to offer my thanks to you and I'm sure that, um, as you have the opportunity to reach out to those managers who you know dug in. That you'll extend your appreciation to them as well. Um, I was asked, uh, earlier today about, uh, providing to council what some of my, uh, goals had been for the first year I was here. Uh, one of my goals was to not have a S A S one fifteen letter. So if we can check that one off the list, that would make me feel good. Um, a S A S one fifteen letter says that we're not doing it during the job in areas that we can and should. And in this case, I think it should offer you some reassurance that we're following the procedures in place. And it should be making me proud of how we run the organization on a daily basis. So that's really the good news. Um, as I've spoken with you, Mr. Chairman, the, um, with all good news, at times comes the, the news that, uh, offers the challenge to the team. On trying to make improvements. And, uh, we were, um, we did not have the best year for health insurance. I think that there are a lot of companies who are looking at their health insurance plan after having a tough year. And, and asking Blue Choice to explain really what happened to us last year. They felt that we had a number of acute claims. Um, fortunately, we have reinsurance that helps us with that. But the bottom line is, as I've communicated to you and to the members of your committee, we're going to have to make some changes. In how we approach health insurance. I think the Healthcare Reform Act, uh, really mandated that. But for us personally, we're going to make some changes. And I'd like to just highlight a couple that we've talked about and to get the committees a blessing to move forward with them. I think we're going to need to take a look at incentivizing our wellness program. Talking about wellness isn't going to get us where we need to go. We need to help our employees to, um, make good choices and to incentivize that. It's going to be, I think, a high priority for us. There are a number of excellent examples right here in our county with companies like B and W. Who are doing a fantastic job with their wellness programs. So instead of, uh, reinventing the wheel, we're reaching out to them and, and to Blue Choice. Um, to help us pull together what would be a good wellness program. We're also taking a look at, um, how we manage the plan with Blue Choice. To see if there are some adjustments we can make on everything from subrogation claims to coordination of benefits. Uh, we're going to take a look at how we market, um, or how we shock the market on our, uh, reinsurance as well. And see what may be available to us. At the end of the day, during the budget process, we're going to need to take a look at how we structure our premiums and the health insurance premium itself. And I, um, and planning on bringing those details to your committee, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that as we position ourselves going forward. We don't, my goal will be to not have another year where we have to dip into the general fund fund balance in order to balance the health insurance. Um, there are some, uh, ways to do that and really takes, well, there isn't a one size fits all for every company. We're going to have to make ones that fit us right. Um, I'd also like to, to just mention, um, one more component of, um, the adjustment. Just to be sure that there weren't any questions about the fund balance with the administrative change. Um, in your budget and one coordinates amendment tonight to move the funds that we didn't spend on vehicles over the fund balances. That for the committee's, uh, benefit is that, um, a change that you're okay with as well and making that revision to the ordinance. And that's really all I have for the addition to the updated financial data and personal banking too.
Look forward to exploring our insurance. Yep. Look forward to all this work that's obtained. Uh, appreciate it, our team. We've come a long way. We've done good. We can do better.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that does put us up. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Carter. But next we have Laura Billy, um, the dream college chairman, baby, Brian, I'm the brown wing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are wanting to receive information in connection with the new Sparkford trails and Greenways plan. Laura Stile, John Cox, and Jean Crouther, and we are here to present. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. My name is Laura Stilly. I'm a city and county president. I'm a dietitian. I'm a frequent trail user and I currently serve as vice chair of the Partners for Active Living Board of Directors. As you may be aware, Partners for Active Living, Sparkford County Parks and Recreation and the city of Sparkford and SPACs. Retained also planning and design out of Greenville to develop the Sparkford Trails and Greenways Plan. This is a trail plan for the urban area of Sparkford County. The purpose of which is to provide a blueprint for connecting Sparkford's existing parks and trail facilities to each other and to local residents. This plan provides recommendations for location of future trails, how to connect existing trails and facility. Priority projects, potential costs, and how partnership or collaboration should be structured for implementation. I think it's important to note that a theme that came up in our meetings, um, we started this process last September. Um, was that residents want connectivity. Um, we're amazed to learn that there are well over one hundred miles of trails existing in Sparkford County right now. Um, but many of them are short and many of them are not easily accessible from other locations or from each other. Um, you'll see when we look at this plan that, um, the map resembles a north, south and east, west spine of connected trails. And from that, I think it's feasible to look to move outward from that even further. This project was funded jointly by grants from the D H E C Healthy South Carolina Initiative. Eat Smart Move More, Sparkford County and the city of Sparkford. A list of participant partners is very extensive, including a lot of, um, local foundations and nonprofits and public, um, representatives. We had great representation and input from stakeholders and residents. We had about five planning meetings this year, including two public meetings. I would like to introduce and turn it over to Jean Crouther and John Cox from also planning to present a synopsis of this plan. Um, Jean is actually a Sparkford native, which will be very helpful in this process. And both are, um, experts in their field. And I want to thank them personally for a fantastic project that I hope will be dog-eared and dirty and not collecting dust on the shelf somewhere.
Mr. Chairman and, uh, and the council, thanks for having us. We are pleased to be with you here today to present on the Greenway plan. We apologize in advance for worrying. The number of slides will go quickly. Uh, yeah, I'm John Cox of all planning and design. And, um, the, the vision is, of the plan is, is to create and invite trails to connect to, uh, your destinations. And provide healthy, um, active living and recreational transportation options for citizens and visitors to the county. Um, it's interesting to note that Americans spend more on bike-related gear and bike-related trips than they do on air travel. And this is, um, kind of, uh, money that we know that Sparkford County can take advantage of. Um, people are looking for places to invest, whether it's places to start a business or, uh, to, to, to buy a home. Um, where there are amenities like this and so there are real. And so there are real economic impacts to these kinds of investments. And we know from what your colleagues in Graveman County and other similar counties in the southeast are doing that there are real economic, as well as health and environmental recreational benefits to these types of investments, whether it's increases in retail sales, attracting visitors, or impacting overall town revitalization efforts as we have tried to address. And others have seen as part of our planning effort, we look at some of the current benefits the county is receiving from your walking and biking infrastructure and estimated that you're currently receiving about $3.7 million in quantifiable benefits either from air quality impacts or savings reduced related to reduced traffic or personal savings at the household level. We know that these kinds of investments can have direct impact on your health, ability to spend. And obviously, that is concerned at the county level and in your municipalities. With just a small increase in the number of people walking and biking in the county, these quantifiable benefits can expand four times. As Laura mentioned, the plan looked at an area of the county that includes all incorporated city of Spartanburg as well as its key areas in the county bounded by I-26, Frosting Park, South, Patrick River in the Caltons area, city of East. And the entire plan recommends about 137 miles of trails of different types, whether they are multi-use trails, like some of your existing trails, the Wadsworth Trails, natural surface trails, which could be used by hikers, bikers, equestrians, or using your neighborhood streets, family-friendly routes that can be accomplished with signage and markings. So this is what the long-term vision for that 137 miles looks like. Providing connections to the major employers, universities, county centers, and downtown. The plan focuses on a idea of spine routes connecting into downtown, but also to key destinations in all directions in the county. About 80 miles or so in that central spine route, building upon connections that are already built. The plan includes specific recommendations for things like how do you get across I-26 at Reesville Road and provide some safety and concepts for that and other key intersections. It also includes recommendations for how to build upon some of the branding and wayfinding that different partners within the county are already doing to build upon those and create kind of a unified brand for trails and greenways throughout the counties so that folks know when they're in different destinations that they are part of this unified county system. The plan includes 13 priority projects. We will talk to you about three of those that are unincorporated in Spartanburg County. And the priorities are based on near-term feasibility, both in terms of political and fiscal cost and in providing connections to key destinations. One of the first needs is along Palm Springs Creek. It would connect from North Spartanburg Park to USC Upstate with a trail along that area. Also conceptualized along Lawson's Ford Creek, a trail that would connect to, from Hewitt Avenue to Chesley Highway, and then connecting from Wadsworth Trail to Reesville Road with a side path like concept. And then one of the key, one of the specific comments that we heard through the planning process was making connections from the existing rail trail into downtown Spartanburg and how difficult that is currently. So the plan envisioned some specific improvements to make that happen along an existing former rail right-of-way and even some ideas about how that investment could spin off with direct private investment opportunities for businesses. And then finally, one of the projects that is, we know a priority to the county park and rec department and has been long contemplated at the county level is a connection between Cleveland Park and Berry Field under the actual highway. This has been contemplated for more than a couple of decades locally. But that particular connection would not only link to your great park there, but also provide some great connections to the countywide system for folks on bikes and walking. The plan includes information on costs, all types of trails for your consideration and for your consideration of your municipal partners. And it also includes recommendations on institutionalizing and implementing the vision through a partnership of local nonprofits as well as municipal governments and local business interest to have a unified and coordinated approach to implementing this vision. And so finally, just ask for the council's consideration for supporting this vision and in supporting your parks department in continuing to prioritize these types of investments for your citizens and the municipal county. And then as opportunities arise to approve funding of segments of this vision through your CIP to support their private nonprofit funds that we know will be leveraged. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we appreciate that, a lot of pictures, like what we're looking at in the plan. Is anyone else on the committee have any comments or questions?
Jeanne is going to present. Jeanne, what's the... I didn't want to say anything. She's getting ready to talk.
No, we...
I thought you had summed it up a few ways.
Actually, Laura did, but I'd like to make a... You know, I am extremely excited to see this report and your presentation. Because if we want to be the county that we can be, having a vision, this isn't, you know, a walk to or maybe we can, this is a definite, we've got to. We're recruiting companies here. Yeah, we can recruit the manufacturing companies that will stay on the interstate. And if we want the companies that are really going to raise our per capita income and have them move downtown and move closer to making an impact, this is what they're looking for. I mean, not only the companies that we're recruiting, but the people. I mean, we've heard it said right now across the United States, behind ourselves, you know, the people resource is more important right now than the industry and business resource. We've got to have a place where people want to come. We can look to our neighbors and see what they've done with their rail trail, the small rabbit, the river. That makes a huge stake. We didn't have the resources, ranking of Lawson's Ford Creek. Like I said, we've got a hundred miles kind of put together. This is what we have to do. If we want to be the Spartanburg that we can be, I'll support anything and any way we can to make this move ahead. And I appreciate it. You know, Laura, his brandy, your husband?
Yes.
He's doing a great job recruiting outstanding students over at Walker. We know those students that come through Walker, they already have beautiful campus and they're seeing what we're trying to do. If you make that next leap, those students won't leave to go either back home or go to Charlotte, Atlanta, wherever, but they'll stay right here. We've got an opportunity to keep them here as well as our own children. Good job.
I'm encouraged at the attitude of the community and I'm seeing to actually combine forces and partnerships, not only from the business community, from the foundation community, and also within our government entities as well. So as we combine forces, we get much more accomplished. And this is a plan, is one of those things that we'll be looking at for the future. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And just related to that comment, we have the honor of working in communities all across the southeast and across the nation. And Spartanburg is very rich in terms of the public partnership and it's unique. Those are the honors.
You know, with Mary Black Foundation, they've got to give... I mean, I just saw it this weekend. It was an article, what's the single best way to prevent dementia and Alzheimer's? Walk. The rail trail, it's only 1.4 mile or 1.8 miles right now. The people that are using that, I mean, they're right now.
I also think that as we look at Catherine and the things that we're wanting to do with the wellness initiative, the more avenues that we have to walk down, excuse the pun, is probably going to be a great thing for all of us. Thank you very much. And Miss Stilly, please forgive me for mispronouncing her.
No, that's okay. Just remember, Stilly, like Silly.
Okay. Number B, receive the information and take desired action in reference to a resolution to support a potential partnership with the United States National Park Service for development of a master plan for the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail in Spartanburg County. And Lisa Dolinger is here to present. Thank you, Lisa.
This is the map of the overall commemorative motor route of the... And this is the National Park Service plan for an infrastructure project throughout the trail. Appreciate your time this afternoon. As we've been discussing, it's extremely important for us to protect special places in our area. One of those special places is the Over Mountain Victory National Trail. I'm here before you today representing a group of folks that believe this trail is extremely important to our area because it's part of a larger picture. We want to preserve and protect the story. After all of this, Spartanburg is revolutionary. We have our own unique story to tell. The Over Mountain Victory National Trail was commemorated in 1980 by Congress. And it represents the Patriot Militia Route to the Battle of Kings Mountain and for the defeat of the loyalists. The soldiers came from Virginia through Tennessee, over the Blue Ridge Mountains, and joined with the militia from North Carolina to Morganton, on to Rested Caltons, and to the Battle of Kings Mountain. The Daniel Morgan March that we enjoy today as an event in our area, led by Dr. George Fields and the Mayor Harris, is part of that effort. It's just a separate march. It actually happened a few months later. But it all relates to the colonies being independent from the British and towards the creation of our United States. So it's a very important story to tell and we want to figure out exactly how we tell that story in our area for visitors, for our children, for our grandchildren. Currently, as the map shows, if you have the large map, there's a commemorative motor route through those four states, 330 miles, links to national forests, four national parks, several state and county parks, and many communities that have their own story to tell about this trail. Currently, 1 million visitors are estimated to visit the trails that are actually on the ground, 84 miles of those. And the interpretive plan through the National Park Service gives communities guidance on how we tell our story. Since it encourages local involvement, we want to make sure that we're not missing the vote in Spartanburg County. What we've done is we've created a partnership of local, regional, statewide, and national groups, including business representatives, active living representatives. I appreciate Mr. Mintz's involvement in this process. And we look forward to working with everyone on actually hiring... We will hire a consultant to create a master plan, work with stakeholders, citizens, and partners to actually develop a plan for how we tell our story of the Over Mountain Victory Trail in our area. We don't want to miss the vote because Polk County, right across the state line, has already created a trail on the ground, about a couple miles, that follows the Green River Road, the Green River. And of course, we know that the battlefield is only three miles away from our county, in Cherokee County, actually. A lot of folks don't realize that the battlefield is actually in Cherokee County. And the Carolina Red Trail, which leads throughout North Carolina, has a plan for Over Mountain Victory Trail on the ground. And we want to make sure that we are part of that process also, linking Chesley and our county over to Cherokee County and the Kings Mountain battlefield. So luckily, we want to create a special place where we hear the story, we capture visitors, we capture families who really want to learn about their heritage. Currently, the trail in our county is six miles in the Chesley community. It follows from Polk County where the trail is currently. The commemorative motor route is the green, the dark green line, following Parrish Ridge Road and Arrowhead Branch Road and Highway 11, all the way to the county's battlefield. So currently, we have signage for the commemorative motor route along this route, about six signings. The brown route represents Highway 11. So how do we capture those folks who want to hear this story? But how do we get them to stay and enjoy some of our special features? Strawberry Hill, downtown Chesley, the Artson Center, lots of special places. Even we want to be able to tell the story about the red...